Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County Virtual Candidate Forum for the Board of Commissioners. The League is proud to support voter education and to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. Wake County is governed by a seven-member Board of Commissioners. The Board enacts policies such as establishment of the property tax rate, regulation of land use and zoning outside municipal jurisdictions, and adoption of the annual budget. Each Commissioner files to run for election within the district where they live, and Commissioners are elected countywide and represent and serve all county residents. This means that every voter votes for candidates in all seven districts. The current fiscal year 2021 budget for Wake County is $1.47 billion. This covers the Wake County Public Schools, Wake Tech Community College, libraries, health and human services, the county contribution to food and nutrition programs, law enforcement, parks, EMS services, elections, and many more programs we see every day. Today, we welcome candidates for District One, Democrat Sig Hutchinson and Republican Greg Jones. District One is in the northeast corner of Wake County encompassing Roseville, Zebulon, and Wendell. Both candidates live in District One. Welcome Greg and Sig. Thank you for joining us today. We will ask every candidate for the Board of Commissioners the same questions. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to the scope of the Board. I'd like to verify with you that both of you that neither one of you has received these questions in advance.
That's correct.
That's correct on my end.
Now, we will start in alphabetical order and then we will try and alternate. You may now have two minutes for an introductory statement. Greg, please, you may go first.
Thank you, Marion. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event today, and I wish we had more of these throughout the county forums and debates, and just getting to know our candidates is very important these days. I am Greg Jones, candidate for Wake County Commissioner in District One. First of all, I'd like to give thanks again to the League of Women Voters for hosting, and here's a little bit about myself. I'm a lifelong resident of Wake County. I've resided here in Wake County for over 50 years. I grew up on a local farm here in eastern Wake County. I attended Wake County Public School System, and I graduated with honors from Wake Technical Community College. I'm a married man of over 30 years with two adult children, and I've served many years as a recreational coach and mentor to young youth students in Wake County. I've served also many years as a past volunteer fireman with the Wendell Fire Department, responding to fires and accidents and different things that's called on by the fire services as an EMT as well. I was once an EMT, certified EMT, and also a hazmat-endorsed technician, Level Three. So, back in the day, I would have been able to handle some of these COVID calls if necessary. I served, me and my wife have served a long time too with our local church and partnership through the Aurora Administration, hosting children from Belarus. These children have been impacted over the years through genetics due to the Chernobyl accident, and so we have participated in multiple fundraising events as well as hosting children from that country for periods of six weeks here in the U.S. just to give them a better quality of life. I currently serve on a local bank advisory board, and I'm also a small business owner for over 30 years, covering two to three states in work as an industrial contractor, which does construction services, welding, crane work, all kinds of industrial requirements, automation, distribution, which is a big thing now that Amazon and all the shipping companies are going off the charts with everyone being at home and ordering packages.
All right. Okay, can you finish your sentence?
Two minutes, right? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, thank you very much. Sig, your turn.
Thank you, Marion, and the League of Women Voters of Wake County, I appreciate you holding this forum. I'm Sig Hutchinson, and I'm running for Wake County Commission. I've been in Wake County for 38 years, married to my sweet wife Nancy, and a Commissioner since 2014, where I've been working to create safe and healthy communities where people can thrive through vision, action, and leadership. As far as vision, many of you know of my work around our freeway system. For the last 25 years, working successfully to create over 250 miles of interconnected greenways. As far as action, I was elected to lead a $2.3 billion transit referendum that was successfully passed in 2016, and now we're implementing that plan. And as far as leadership, since 2014, I've been working to create opportunities of leadership for myself, including the Chair of CAPO, our Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which makes decisions billions of dollars each year on transportation issues. I'm Vice Chair of Go Triangle, which is a regional transit agency, working to implement that $2.3 billion transit referendum. And I'm also Chair of the Upper Neuse River Basin Association, working to keep Falls Lake Reservoir clean. I'm also working to create healthy and safe communities through an initiative called Live Well Wake, working on social determinants of health issues such as affordable housing, transit and transportation, job creation and economic development, mental health and access to healthcare, working in vulnerable communities and what we refer to as familiar faces or high utilizers of the system. I really enjoy my work as a Commissioner, and I appreciate your support in November for Sig Hutchinson, Wake County Commissioner.
Thank you. We will now move to the question part of the forum. You will have two minutes to answer each question. First question, "We're all living under new pressures and trying to adjust to a new normal. Existing inequalities are more apparent than ever. The public school system recognizes this disparity and has provided students with laptops and hotspots. What strategies are you prepared to offer to help low-income families with children as they navigate and adjust to the pandemic environment?" Sig, you may please start first. You want me to repeat it?
Please.
"We are all living under new pressures and trying to adjust to a new normal. Existing inequalities are more apparent than ever. The public school system recognizes this disparity and has provided students with laptops and hotspots. What strategies are you prepared to offer to help low-income families with children as they navigate and adjust to the pandemic environment?"
Well, as I mentioned, a lot of my work in creating safe and healthy communities have been working around these social determinants of health, and what we've realized is that your zip code can be up to a 17- or 18-year difference in terms of life expectancy and the quality of life, and that's even accentuated with the current COVID situation that we find ourselves in. So, we as Wake County and me as the Commissioner have been working around a lot of issues, specifically around housing security. We've received what we call care funding, which is about $193 million from the federal government, where we've allocated funds to allow people to stay in their houses. So, we're creating an initiative called House Wake that's going to be kicked off this September. We're helping people with their utility bills, we're trying to do more testing, and our emergency operations center has now been open for over 180 days, the longest in the entire history of the county. So, a lot of what we're doing is trying to keep people safe. Some of the other work that we're doing is specifically around food security. We have put out over 2 million meals to our citizens, and now we're allocating funds to make sure that that continues through the end of the year. As you've mentioned, Marion, the hotspots that we're having for kids, and we just allocated $15 million in addition to the $25 million that we've already added to the Wake County Public School System to allow them to reach out to the kids. We know this is truly unprecedented, and as we try to make our way through things that we've never done before, including online learning, we need to do all that we can to make sure that our families and our kids are safe and healthy and feel secure that they can learn in the environment that they're in, no matter where that is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Greg, are you ready to go?
Yes, I am. Personally, I don't have the advantage of Mr. Hutchinson of actually serving at this time, so I can't really sit here and boast about things we're doing. What I can do is say I would like to get our school system back to operating as normal as possible and as quickly as possible, especially for the elementary-age students and families. I really believe we could get some of these school systems back open with the elementary, especially kindergarten through sixth grade, and use a young teacher format, which is a whole lot less likely to be impacted by the COVID crisis, and this would allow the kids to get back to school, have steady meals, have consistency in their life, and try to keep them as normal as possible. I'm trying to ward off any type of psychedelic effects that they may have for the rest of their lives, so like folks that come from wars and armies or big fire scenes or horrible crashes. I visualize every day these young children waking up, seeing people with masks, having to stay home, mom and dad not able to work. All of this stuff is deeply concerning to me when it comes to psychological effects. And I think the sooner we can get our elementary, especially kids, back to school and get them back to a norm, then we can work on phasing in some of our middle school students and our high school students, and it's a difficult situation. It's hard to balance, and I'm just on the outside looking in. And I just want to apply some good common values. I mean, we're all going shopping at places and doing different things, engaging in the public, and I think it's time we give our parents a chance to go back to work, get our kids back in school, and do our best to deal with what happens, not what could happen, okay? That's sort of where I stand on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to question two, and Greg, you'll be going first on this one. The Wake County Infant Mortality Work Group reported this year a very high death rate of African-American mothers and babies. What programs and resources should the county commission direct to help this vulnerable population? How will you protect the budget devoted to such vital health services you are forced to confront financial pressures from decreased tax revenues? Greg, you want me to repeat it?
No, I'm good. Well, first of all, I would have to really do some homework and research on what is causing this. I mean, it's kind of open-ended on why these health issues are relying, are occurring, and it could be a multiple of reasons. It could be lifestyle, it could be where they actually lived, living and raised at. It's just so many variables to a question such as that, and I would like to have more research and data before I could respond to having a solution for something that I'm not fully aware of. I mean, we have so many statistics thrown at us every day in different scenarios, and a lot of it is based on color, a lot of it, as Mr. Hutchinson mentioned, is based on just pure zip code or where you raised or where you live, then I would have to have more insight and more knowledge on what was really the root cause of this before I could address how I could deal with it on a financial aspect or on a personal aspect of what we could do. I am fully engaged in serving the people. I want to make sure that our people are cared for in Wake County. I don't want anyone to go without. I've been without, so I know how it feels, and I've seen a lot of my friends and some of my colleagues and people I were raised with really go through hardships and hard times, and so I have a deep heart. I'm passionate about making sure that everyone has great opportunities and well-being and a healthy life.
Thank you very much, Greg. All right, Sig.
So, thank you. That's a great question. I was actually reading the Infant Mortality Task Force report this weekend, and it's a great report. One of the driving forces behind that is just the disparity between babies of color and Caucasian babies regarding infant mortality, which obviously needs to be addressed. Some of the issues that have been identified in that report include home visits. So, as a new mother gets back into her home, that we send a nurse out to actually evaluate the home situation, to start to teach some parenting skills, also sleep education, you know, so the mothers can know how the baby sleeps and to avoid any types of problems associated with, you know, that could happen from the baby not being in the right place sleeping. There's also issues around prenatal care that are in the report that need to be addressed, and some issues around education prior to getting pregnant that are important to understand. But one of the things that I am interested beyond the Infant Mortality Task Force is what I refer to as the First Thousand Days. This is a program that has been promoted in other parts of the country, particularly Minneapolis, where they look at the first thousand days of life, which is about three and a half years, and put out a program that deals with that first three and a half years specifically for babies in high-risk situations. We have an amazing pre-K program here in Wake County. Our K through 12 schools are great, but I think that there's a missing link beyond the infant mortality of the first three and a half years of life that I would like to work on in my next term as a Commissioner.
Thank you. We'll move on to the third question. Recent events have highlighted community pressures on the resources devoted to public safety and law enforcement. This can show up in how the criminal justice system operates, how law enforcement officers operate in public schools, and in other interactions in our community. Do you feel that improvements need to be made or that funding needs to be reevaluated? Sig.
Well, improvements can always be made, and Marion, let me just highlight what's really some of the issues that we're talking about, about the systemic racism that we've experienced throughout our history here in America, and I'm so glad to be part of the Black Lives Matter. Just to say that I think a big component of that is listening. As a white male, I think that there needs to be a sensitivity of listening and understanding and being aware of what our Black and Brown brothers and sisters have to deal with every day, so I'm very, very interested in that and working on that very hard. Now, regarding the police response to that, we're, you know, we need to support our police, we need to support our sheriff, but we can always do better. One of the things that we have done is what we call CIT training to teach our officers how to deal with situations where there's a mental health issue, but also how to de-escalate situations. Also, racial sensitivity obviously needs to be a component of all this, and I think data, data is very important to start looking at, you know, who are we're stopping, you know, the race of who we're stopping, why we're stopping people, because we need to be dialing that back. I'm very proud of our police, I'm very proud of our sheriff, I'm very proud of our police chief, but obviously, we can do better, and I want to work with the chief and the sheriff to do all we can to make sure, one, that our citizens are safe, but also that we start to deal seriously about the systemic racism that we find ourselves in throughout the country as well as in Wake County.
Thank you. Okay, Greg, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. Marion, I would just like to say that public safety has got to be priority one moving forward. The recent events of riots in downtown and the things we're seeing in the national media that's happening to other communities throughout our nation are very disturbing to me, and I want to ensure the voters and the voting public at this time, and your audience that will be viewing this later, that public safety is one of the number-one things I would focus on. The law enforcement community would definitely have my full support in doing what is necessary to maintain order and striving to keep people safe here in Wake County. We must ensure that our students are safe on campuses and as they attend and get on the bus. We must ensure that the citizens, as they shop, are safe, and we must ensure that our business owners and small business owners throughout Wake County are protected as well. We do have some racism issues. A lot of that has been brought to light, and it needs to be dealt with and dealt with professionally. So, we got to come together as a community and sit at the table, and we got to work through our differences. We can never solve things just by throwing money at it. We have actually got to come up with some solutions, and the law enforcement community must be priority one, because if we're not safe as citizens, we no longer have an economy. We no longer have a society. It'll be the strong winds, and we can all look back at history and see where that leads us to. So, I'm all about making sure our public safety is priority one here in Wake County, and I think all other items will fall suit under that. People will want to strive and live here if they feel safe here, and I think that's where our future is headed, safety. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question. Wake County has invested a lot of time and money in improving our public transportation system. What do you think that system is going to look like in the next few years? How can we best benefit from the investment and capital commitments that have already been made? Greg?
Well, one of the things I've noticed with transportation is some of the things that are being proposed by our current County Commissioner Board and Mr. Hutchinson is public transit, and that's a great thing. I know we need that, but the problem is that some of the citizens located in rural Wake County are having to pay for this through property tax, and they will never see benefits from it. Their children would probably never even see benefits from paying for public transit that will mostly benefit existing huge municipalities such as Cary or Raleigh. So, I think we need to look at a different type of pay structure for some of these improvements, maybe go to some zonal-type things like they did with the Global Trans Park down in Kinston, where people who will greatly benefit from will actually have to pay for, and leave the rural communities out of the equation when it comes to property tax and all the fees we're having to pay just to look towards the future. And we're promoting so much high density in certain areas that eventually that's going to have an issue of its own. If we keep filling this county with body after body after body, traffic's going to continue to get worse, and as I've said in a lot of interviews in the past, the cart is already ahead of the horse on this issue, and we have got to look at spreading out some of these things and keep preserving rural life in America as well, and a lot of that exists here in Wake County. So, I would like to see a little more balancing act and a little bit less emphasis on the public structure. Let's just look at the light rail project that this sort of went bust after $500 million was spent on it. That money would have went a long ways taking care of some students here in Wake County or some of the homeless here in Wake County. It's so many things that those resources could have been used for other than what's coming in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg. All right, yes, Sig.
Well, thank you for the question and for the citizens and residents who know, I've been working on this for 25 years, and I'm quite proud of what we're doing in transportation because we clearly understand congestion's getting worse and we just cannot pave our way out of this problem. One of the things that I've done is pass a $2.3 billion sales tax referendum. Mr. Jones mentioned property tax. Our transit referendum is not funded by property tax, it's funded by sales tax, and it's throughout the entire county. And as many of you know who know the transit plan, there's three main components. Number one is tripling the bus capacity from 17 miles to 83 miles with 15-minute frequencies. And Mr. Jones mentioned about our rural community, one of the key components of this plan is to connect every municipality, all 12 municipalities in Wake County with this 15-minute level of service. In addition to that, we have a new technology called Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, which will be 20 miles radiating from Raleigh into Cary, and then rail, which is going to be extremely exciting. We call it commuter rail. This is heavy rail running from Garner all the way into Raleigh, Cary, Mooresville, RTP, and into Durham. Mr. Jones mentioned the light rail, which was unfortunate. It wasn't 500 million, we lost about 120 million, but that was not any Wake County money. That was Durham, Orange money, and we're very, very clear that all of our Wake County funds are only used to fund the transit system in Wake County. We're moving forward on transit. We're four years into a 10-years plan. I'm heavily involved in that and want to make sure that all of our citizens not only have congestion-free as much as possible, but affordable transportation for all of our citizens in Wake County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to question five. We expect many people to be facing a housing crisis in the next few months due to evictions or foreclosures resulting from high unemployment and the economic crisis we face here in Wake County. How do you propose to address what will become the dire need for emergency and longer-term affordable housing in our community? Sig?
Okay, well, thank you for that question, and of course, that is something I've been heavily involved in too with my work with Live Well Wake. First, regarding what we are doing, we have put a penny of our sales property tax towards housing for $14 million a year. We just got a report this week showing that we have exceeded anything we've ever done in the past with that money, and with federal funds, we're going to be able to build over 700 units of affordable housing as a result of the efforts that we're doing. We are working with Lorena McDowell, who is an amazing individual around many areas. They're dealing with the homeless population, which are the hardest house. We're working to try to keep people in their housing so they don't become homeless. If they are homeless, we've got another program to, we call rapid rehouse, to get them rehoused, and then, as I mentioned, we're trying to build more affordable units. But in addition to that, we're trying to work with the private sector, or we are working with the private sector and our municipal partners to try to create just more product. We need actually more product to keep the pressure on the increase in housing prices mitigated as time moves on. So, that's a big component of working with our private sector partners. But you mentioned the COVID situation, and it's tragic, and so we have put $15 million. As I mentioned, we're rolling out our program called House Wake, which is going to provide housing dollars for families to be able to stay in their housing. It's not going to be enough, but we have a coordinated intake line that's going to be opening in early September to deal with all of the resources that citizens can apply for and use to try to stay in their housing to stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Greg?
Yes, ma'am. Affordable housing is a tough topic because due to regulations in the county and the increasing cost of living and the cost of construction, it's almost hard to get a grasp on top of it and control it by any means. One thing I think we need to look at when it comes to affordable housing is the true definition of affordable housing. You know, I've heard a lot of different numbers in Wake County. I've even heard as high as $250,000 per unit is considered affordable housing to me in Wake County. And as a product, as a young man, I stayed in a single-wide trailer for over 10 years with my mom. That was affordable housing to me. You know, something simpler, smaller, that will meet the needs and not create such a burden on folks to have to pay for, and I know it's hard to do, you know, and so many people due to COVID have lost their jobs without any thing they can do about it, you know, and their savings are depleted, so I mean, it's a very difficult situation to deal with. I'm all about trying to create affordable communities. I'm all about trying to make sure that nobody sleeps on the street at night, but we may have to draw the line on how nice of facilities that we are building. A lot of the people that are working and paying taxes in Wake County don't live in homes that are nice, is what they're building for the so-called affordable housing communities. So, I've seen some different models and different plans throughout the states that I travel in and work in, and I've seen all different programs and communities throughout, so I would like to maybe shed a little light on those if I get elected to see if we can't structure things a little bit different and spread the cost out a little bit better and make it true affordable housing. That definition and word has been tossed around so much. That definition and word has been tossed around so much, and I've seen some, not Tarson Hall-type atmospheres being built, but I've seen some very high-end neighborhoods that are still considered affordable housing. The priority should be taking care of the people, making sure they're sheltered, making sure they have food, clothing, and safety. Thank you.
Very much. All right, I think we're running out of time, so I think we're going to move to closing So thank you, candidates, today for coming to participate in our virtual candidate forum. "We recognize that running and serving in elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy, and often sacrificed opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, is grateful that we have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward to serve the important duties as member of the Wake County Board of Commissioners." You have two minutes each to make closing statements. Greg, oh, Sig, I'm sorry, Sig, since you went second, you can go first now. Can we switch? Thank you, sorry about that.
All right, thanks, Marion. Once again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Wake County for putting this together. I think it's so important to educate the voters. Clearly, this is an important election, and we could talk more about the opportunities to vote and how you can vote. Early voting is going to be open. You can also request your ballot by mail, or you can show up on election day. But it's so important that you educate yourself and that most importantly, that you get out and vote. I know so many of you with the League of Women Voters, you're my good friends, you know, my sweet wife Nancy, who I've been married to now for thirty-eight years, and we love living in Wake County. I love being your Commissioner. As I mentioned, I've been working since two thousand and fourteen and actually before to create safe and healthy communities where people can thrive around vision, leadership, and action. And I think I have shown today, highlighting my vision, such as the greenways, things such as actions, such as the transit referendum, and over seven bonds that I've left to preserve over seven thousand acres of perfectly protected open space. And then in leadership, leadership around transportation issues, transit issues, clean water issues, and healthy communities. As I mentioned, I love this work. I love working with our community. I've been actively involved for years and years and want to continue this work, which is why I'm asking for your vote in November to reelect Sig Hutchinson, Wake County Commissioner in District One. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Greg, thank you.
Well, once again, I would like to also express my gratitude to the League of Women Voters for hosting this live forum, and we look forward to this upcoming election. And I would just ask the citizens, for their vote for me, it's time we have a change here in Wake County, a different perspective. It's time we look at some other options and see if there ain't other ways of doing things in a more efficient manner. Mrs. Hutchinson has served our county and our citizens, and I think there's a time for folks, other folks, to have a chance at this. Our Democratic Board, all Democratic Board, has seven Democrats, and there's not one Republican such as I on that board. And so therefore, all the citizens in Wake County are not truly being represented. There are thousands of conservative voices such as I in Wake County, and we need a seat at that table. We have good ideas, we have values, but we still have a heart, and we want to see the county prosper, we want to see the citizens prosper, we want to make sure that we're safe, and we want to make sure that all benefit from the policies. And so I just ask for your vote on November third. You can go to my website at Greg Jones for Wake. You can follow me on Facebook if you would like. You can find all that information there. And I would just like an opportunity to bring some different perspective to the Wake County Board of Commissioners. It's important that all of us are represented, and I think that's a great need here in Wake County. And once again, I thank you for hosting, and I look forward to your vote and your support on November third.
Thank you. We close our forum now. Be sure to go to vote411.org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot and to learn the latest information on polling place hours and locations and how to apply for an absentee by mail ballot. Thank you again for joining us, and we'll see you at the next forum. Thank you, bye.